All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Village Board to order at 7:38. Thank you, everyone, for your time, talent, and service in advance this evening, and thank you for joining us. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
And all trustees are present except for trustee Warren, who's been excused. But everybody else is here, right?
Correct.
Trustee Bachworth here yet? She's just getting over.
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Problem with my video.
Ah, okay, great. So we have been properly noticed. So we're moving on to item four, which is Special Order of Business. For A is Consider North Shore Fire Department renovation of Station 82 from Glendale. We have Chief Whitaker here this evening and which I appreciate. The North Shore Fire Department Board met last week and we approved the 2022 budget and also heard a presentation on the needs of the addressing the condition of the Glendale Fire Department or Fire Station. And the Fire Board gave consensus to show shared consensus around one of the options, Option A. And so I wanted Chief Whitaker to come and present it to our board so that I you have the opportunity to ask questions and then also we would have the opportunity to take a vote to see if we're all in favor to support moving forward as the North Shore Fire Department continues to contemplate this future move. Chief Whitaker, I will hand it over to you.
Okay. Would it be best if I share this slide presentation that's in the packet? Or how do you, I guess, do you want me to do that for people that are watching that aren't, don't have the packet?
I think that would be helpful if that's possible.
I will try to do that. And just to get out of here. And to do is my screen sharing on your end? Okay. Great. So thank you for having me. And as President McKeg expressed, the Fire Department Board met last Tuesday, and one of the things the Board has been working on actually back since 2016 is the update of three of the fire stations. And in 2016, the Fire Department Board appointed a long-range financial planning committee that looked at some of the issues and financial issues that were going to face the Fire Department 2016 to 2022. And we're getting to that point, which has come faster than I think hopefully any of us have expected. But anyway, the one of the major issues that came of that long-range financial planning process was the looking at capital assets and primarily three of the facilities. One of them being the Glendale Station, the other two being Shorewood and Whitefish Bay Stations. The station numbers are corresponding, those 82 numbers, 81, 83, those are corresponding numbers to a countywide numbering system that we participate in. So the station in Whitefish Bay was completed and renovated. The station in Shorewood was completed and renovated. And so now we're on to the third station that was identified in that long-range financial plan that was in need of additional updates or work. So we have five stations, one in Brown Deer, one in Glendale, one in Shorewood, one on Whitefish Bay, and one in Bayside. The station in Glendale has six firefighters, 24/7/365. It's our operational shift commander headquarters. Reason we use that as that location is is really geographic in itself. From a standpoint of getting north and south, there's a significant north and south thoroughfares on Green Bay Road, Port Washington Road, east and west on Silver Spring. And we can get onto I-43 from there easily. So we can get to from a just a simple geographic and response standpoint, that's become somewhat of our center hub station. Other office staff located there is our training and continuing education and professional standards person who does all of our ongoing training professional standards and things like that. And we have a master mechanic there that has a small shop to do our vehicle maintenance. We have about 30 vehicles in our fleet. The building was constructed in 1980, or excuse me, 1963. It's about 13,000 square feet. The sleeping areas were remodeled in the mid 80s, and there was a minor kitchen update in 2012. And other than that, the building has generally remained somewhat consistent with the exception of the normal fixing of HVAC systems, air conditionings, and things like that. In 2016, when the Board took on undertook the long-range financial planning, we did have independent consultants look at those facilities. At the time, Harwood Engineering Consultants was hired to look at the Glendale Station, the one we're talking about today. Their report in summary form came back and said the majority of the underground plumbing needs to be abandoned and replaced. There's underground sanitary pipe failures currently in the facility. The piping in the bathrooms regularly freeze during the winter, which creates other issues. The HVAC system is passage useful life underground. It's an interesting building. At the time, it must have been the way to do things, but the HVAC ducting is under the floors. So it's under concrete floors. So when the ducting fails, that's a significant challenge to repair. The ducting also began to fill with drain water just from the normal sediment and the ground there. So we've had to do some emergency repairs to the ductwork to continue keeping the HVAC system operating. The repair shop that's we have, like I said, about 30 vehicles in our fleet. We have a full-time mechanic that works out of that shop. The facility was not designed to be a repair shop. We have somewhat known that the opportunity that we're looking at here was coming. And our staff has been amicable to sort of waiting out that opportunity. And we do send out a fair amount of work simply because of facilities. We're unable to do any major lifting of of those larger vehicles. So we do the smallest small work in-house, but anything that requires a fire engine or ladder truck to be lifted on a vehicle lift, we have to send out. At the time, we did the study, and I'll cover this a little bit. We did a financial analysis of what that would cost or save us bringing in-house, and I'll give you some information on that shortly. The other thing that the building doesn't have is the airflow in and out of the building is really somewhat unusual. It's a low voltage electrical system throughout the building that parts aren't available for. The system needs to be replaced, and the roof was at one point repaired and is in need of replacement. So at the time, the committee that was appointed and actually published the report in 2017, there's a link to that report or website in your packet if you're interested in the entire report. Basically, came back and said begin immediate planning for replacement or remodel of Shorewood, Whitefish Bay, and Glendale Facilities. There is current debt that expires from the facilities that we own in Brown Deer and Bayside that was taken out to construct those facilities that is expiring in 2022 and 2023. And the report recommended coinciding the expiration of that debt with issuance of new debt to take care of these three projects. In 2017, we did bring in Zimmerman Design Group to look at options for this facility so we could get some cost estimates of what we were looking at as part of that financial plan. They identified three options. One was a major remodel. One was a smaller scale remodel. One was complete teardown. And those estimates ranged in 2017 anywhere from $5.3 to $6.5 million to pet him a scope. So the current status, we have done repairs to keep the building operating. But where several large projects that loom in the next two years, which include replacement of the entire HVAC, replacement of that electrical system and the infrastructure of the electrical system, major plumbing requires removal of some concrete floors in the buildings because of plumbing and HVAC issues. The roof needs replacement, and there's a rough structural support issue that will need repairing. And we this garage catch basin issue is not currently code compliant and requires removal of major areas of the concrete apparatus for it to repair. So there's some significant costs to do just repairs there. Well, as we've come to this project, we've looked at needs for the department. And one that was identified throughout the long-range financial plan was that our administrative staff is generally split up into three facilities. When the department was created in 1995, the office space in none of the five facilities at the time had office space for the joint larger fire department administrative staff. The building we're in now, where a majority of our staff is in Brown Deer, that was constructed to be the Brown Deer Fire Department, not to be the North Shore Fire Department Administrative Headquarters. So there's really about 1,100 square feet of office space there. If we were to put our staffs together in one space, we need about 5,000 square feet of space. So we have office staff in our administrative staff and our Brown Deer location, our Bayside location, and our Glendale location. And it's it's a challenge to be completely upfront and truthful to try to create that. We do a lot of driving around to get to things, just scheduling issues. And in most departments our size, there's a single administrative office.
Chief Whitaker, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So your administrative staff, how many people is it?
There's about 15.
15. Then don't do it's just administration.
Right. They're not on they're not out on the street firefighters, so to speak, that are administrative, either civilian staff or sworn staffers. About 15 of them. They are on the slide, the slide that next, no, no, I've put up on the screen. They're listed out there.
Thank you.
Yep. So that this summarizes the five facilities that currently are in existence. The vehicle maintenance facility that I referred to earlier, we have one full-time master mechanic who does majority of our work. Like I said, we do contract some of that work out, not because of time, but because of facilities to do the work. So when we looked at this and the or the Board looked at the the costs that would come with building a maintenance facility, they looked at what was that cost impact and could there be financial savings to bring in that work in-house? The slide that I have on the screen found that we spent about $25,000 per year in contract services that have the potential to be done in-house. If the proper equipment was available, it was a 20-year payback in general to bring that work in-house. Now, the facility is definitely going to have a longer than 20-year lifespan. So the financial assessment that came of the study and of the facility and how do you pay for all this stuff? This is all really good stuff to talk about, but you know, the big question is, how do you pay? So the long-range financial plan from 2017 identified that the department could borrow approximately $6.2 million in debt to be used for the remodel or replacement of the stations in Glendale, Shorewood, and Whitefish Bay. If the goal were to be to maintain the current debt payments through 2043. So in summary, for example, Shorewood makes three three sort of separate pots of payments to the Fire Department. There's operating, there's capital, and there's debt service. The debt service payment covers the facilities and the really large costs. And so really what's included in our debt payment is facilities. It's majority facilities. So the payment that comes in, the goal at the time, or what the finance, the long-range financial planning committee looked at was, could we keep it the same? Once that debt expires in 2022 and 2023, if we renewed the debt for another 20 years, could we keep that level to maintain the community contribution or the debt service at the same level? And that was that was the sort of the goal of what was talked about at the time. So based on that current interest rates, because interest rates are more favorable today than they were in 2017, that $6.2 million was that capacity that was determined was what was affordable, what to keep the payments the same for the seven communities. Based on interest rates today, that number has actually gotten to be 8.2 million. So we have a very low interest rates, which increases your capacity to borrow and pay for things right now. The Shorewood and Whitefish Bay Projects used about 3.7 million of the 8.2, leaving $4.2 million for this Glendale project for that fire station there. So in addition to the 4.2, the department does have $200,000 of money that we have available from bonding for the two other fire station projects, the Whitefish Bay and Shorewood projects that remain. The projects also, we project that we have general fund reserves available. So that leaves the department with about a $5 million capacity to do this project. It is where we stand. The Board asked staff to work with a couple consultants to look at options for this facility. We put together four options that we presented to the Board, and those are on the on the presentation I'm showing now. Option A is to basically take the building that's there, tear it down, build a new fire station, office space, and a vehicle maintenance facility. And that, so we initially got our cost projections in in May of 2021. Over the summer, there was a significant inflation in construction costs that those prices are stabilizing. And in talking to our architect, who is that we've used on our other two projects, they they actually said that they've seen about 15% inflation in construction costs over the summer in some of their bidding. So that seven to $7.3 million number is what we looked at as far as this was April and May. They said, hey, you know, we can't profit from a projection. We want to make you aware. We've seen costs go up over the summer. They're starting to stabilize or come back down. Price of wood has come down. Other other products availability is getting better. That price is getting, there's coming down, but if you went to bid over the summer, you could have seen bids up to 8.4 for a project like that. Option B was new 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 fire station. So tear down what's there, build a new fire station and the maintenance facility. So leave out the office space, keep the administrative offices as they are today. That was projected at 6.2 to 6.5 million. Again, we asked him, hey, what's our, in your worst case scenario over the summer bidding, what did you see? He gave us a new number of 7.4. Both those options, we look at facilities as a 50-year term for those facilities. We did ask for two remodel options. One was to remodel the fire station and have an addition for that facility, the vehicle maintenance facility at about 3.3 million. And then a remodel of the existing facility, nothing new, was about 3 million. And based on the cycles of building, we're projecting a 10 to 20-year lifespan of those facilities. So in the analysis, Option A consolidates the administrative offices, builds a new fire station and a maintenance facility. It puts us all in one location. There's about 3, 3,100 square feet of office space. We have some additional parking needs because we move move people and vehicles there that have assignments for inspectors and things that take vehicles out and about as part of their shift. We did look at just from a one question came up from some of the Board members about, hey, what do other similar sized fire departments do? How does it look? If you if you measure what our total coverage area and population is, we're very similar to Janesville and Waukesha. Wauwatosa, West Alice are a little smaller. Racine and Kenosha are a little bigger. They all have a single office space where they have like a main administrative office space for their their fire department. It gives us a training and conference room that right now our largest facility could hold 15 people in a room. We have 24 people that work per shift, 24/7/365. So that's a challenge for us to get our people through their training. The new facility would create a basically a large meeting room. One of the challenges that we faced in the North Shore through several several major incidents that have occurred, whether that be flooding, the COVID-19 pandemic was really a single space where some of the joint services, the Fire Department, the Health Department, the Joint Dispatch Center could get together with the police agencies and have what's termed an emergency operation center where we could coordinate those operations and the room would be able to handle something like that. The last point I'll make on Option A is in looking out to the future, the Brown Deer and Bayside Station, we really don't project any major debt service type of needs for another 20 years, which from a long-range financial planning standpoint was somewhat coordinated as part of that 2016, 2017 plan. So borrow for the projects now for another 20 years. So in another 20 years, and probably maybe none of us will be part of that discussion. That our people that that replace us have that opportunity to make a good financial decision moving forward.
Um, Chief Whitaker?
Yes.
A question about 1,900 square feet for covered parking?
Yep.
So all staff vehicles would have covered parking in Glendale?
So the staff vehicles that are in the three, I'll call it the three split stations right now where they're split up. That's basically a garage. It's garage space for putting those vehicles that are fire inspectors, our staff that works that works and needs vehicles to get around or park inside, correct?
So is there, I mean, I think with our police squads, I remember them saying that for their the computers, etc., in their car, it was better to have them not sitting outside in a Wisconsin winter. Is there technology in the vehicles that we need to have them in a, would you build a parking ramp or would it be a single-story parking structure or?
It's a it's a three-bay two-deep garage. So six to eight vehicles, depending on how you park them. And there are computers in majority of those vehicles, the mobile data computers like the police squads have. There's cameras.
Vehicle.
It's a very similar vehicle, correct? The, so the cost analysis on Option A, there is about 4.2 million available in that in that money, up to five, depending on whether or not general fund reserves could be spent. That would take Board approval. We looked at a 50-year lifespan. So we said to our financial consultant, who's Ellers, if this project were to move forward, what is the additional cost to the municipalities that they aren't paying in debt service today to us for these projects? The the slide on the screen has those that additional payment, that's an annual payment. The cost or the payment is based on double A bond rating at 35 with 35 basis points. There is a potential we could have a community that is a triple A borrow for us, which would decrease the interest on that on that borrowing. And that so the true interest cost is just over 2%. When I met with the seven managers and administrators, the feedback I got on the interest rate was that that's being very conservative. So in other words, we probably would get a better rate. This is just a projection is what Ellis has provided us. This isn't based on, this is based on, hey, if you did this in spring, this is maybe the worst case scenario.
An annual for how many years?
20 years.
Every year, $24,000 extra for the Village of Shorewood.
Correct. So Option B looks at just the fire station and the maintenance facility, doesn't address the administrative or emergency operation center needs. That's a 50-year life expectancy. And so that is a net difference using the same interest rate projections of 17,667 for Shorewood. Option C is a 10 to 20-year life expectancy, project cost of 3.3 million. So the the net cost would be likely the same for the municipalities. But on the on the downfall side of that, this, the buildings that were in A and B have a 50-year lifespan. C and D are 20-year at the maximum life expectancy. So one of the concerns that was identified by the Fire Department Board was that in 20 years, if you if you do C and D, in 20 years, not only are we going to be talking about the updating this facility in Glendale, but we're going to be talking about major needs in the Brown Deer and Bayside Facility. So that it will overlap major projects, which could potentially then create additional financial implications for that. And Option D, again, that's the remodel of the current building at $3 million. So at the Board, we've we've talked about this in September. There was a brief discussion in August at the Fire Department Board. I was asked to take the detail back to the seven administrators and managers of the municipalities and talk about the options with them. It what came out of that group is generally supportive of Option A. If there's a support to do the project at times to do it now because of the low interest rates. The office space had a projected cost of $240 a square foot. We did work with the architect and have sharpened the pencil on that number. So we did update our goals that that's included in our cost projections now, the sharpened pencil number, so to speak. We talked about those cost due to inflation earlier and the numbers that over the summer, some of the bidding that was done increased. One of the other ideas that came up was there is a former Health Department Director, Anne Christensen, who she and I worked, there's a lot of synergy between the Fire Department, Health Department. We have a lot of similar end goals, and she and I worked on a lot of their projects together and COVID, we spent a lot of time together. And one of the things that I learned from her was the Health Department needed to talk about similar issue we had, which is single office space for their staff. They're they're generally mobile deployers, but they need a single space where they all their staff can work out of an office. And she has two locations now, or the Health Department has two locations now, one in Brown Deer and one in Shorewood. And and her her ask of me at the time, when we talked about this project was, hey, could we look at something that we created a a space that could, Fire Department could be in together with the Health Department? And we would address our our need to get our staffs together. And that would create not only a more synergistic environment between the Fire Department and the Health Department, but also allow our staffs to work better together as Fire Department and Health Department staffs. So the North Shore Health Department is is their, the Health Department Director and how that joint consortium works is Brown Deer is sort of supervises the Health Department now and does the financial management of the Health Department. They're absent of a Health Department Director right now. They up until a couple of weeks ago were absent of a village manager. So the the I was asked to meet with the village president and talked about, hey, is this the opportunity if if the seven communities do something? Is this the time to do it? Because there could be a project moving forward. She is going to talk to their Board and that and promise to feedback hopefully by November as to whether they would have interest. Now, that space would be additional space required that that would be needed for them, but that may be if you're doing one project, there may be some some cost benefits to doing it at the same time. As I indicated earlier, interest rates and the projections from Eller seem higher than market. They're conservative. And we did look at at request to the managers, a 30-year borrowing versus a 20-year borrowing to try to smooth out some of those numbers from the community contributions. We did take that back to Ellers and ask them to do some projections. Unfortunately, when you move to 30-year borrowing, you have to start using revenue bonds, not general obligation bonds. So that means higher interest rates. And you end up with your debt service that you're paying interest on is is a pretty, it nearly doubles between the 20-year and the 30-year look. So you're at you're paying almost 1.5 million more, and that's just in interest alone. So that that next slide gives you some individual municipal cost projections. So, uh, that, that next slide gives you some individual municipal cost projections based on the 20 and 30 year obligations. So the, one of the final slides here is some decision points. Option A and B, uh, can't be completed without some level of increased municipal contribution to our debt service. Uh, A, B, C, and D, um, all have some level of cost. Uh, but like I said, A and B require, uh, increases in the debt contribution. The other thing that needs to be resolved is the health department office space and that is something that's probably not going to be resolved in the next month. But whether or not the municipalities who are all members of the joint health department would have an interest in, in trying to time those two projects together. Uh, so with that, as President Mckegg indicated, uh, the board, uh, talked about consensus and sort of where everyone stood. Uh, from a timeline, we as from a department and a staff, we were hoping to have feedback. In October and November, so we could spend the winter doing planning. As far as getting projects together. And then getting out to bid late winter, uh, for spring, um, type of construction from a timing perspective of things. So with that, I, I turned it back to the, uh, Madam President for any further.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Whitaker. That was a really detailed presentation. So to sum up for the board, um, this evening, I would like you to consider. The North Shore Fire Department renovation of Station 82 in, um, Glendale. As I said, the consensus of the North Shore Fire Department Board was to pursue option A. So that's what I would, I ask you to consider support of so that I can take that back, um, to the board moving forward. So, uh, trustee Stockbrand.
When you're done, I, I guess my question here is with the pandemic, we've all learned so much about virtual working and so many. Institutions and businesses are looking at a virtual workplace. Why are we so focused on a bricks and mortar? Has, has the village, I mean, has North Shore Fire Department looked at going to a virtual environment for administration to save the money? For efficiency? I, I don't understand why. I'd like to know. Where that discussion, what happened with anything looking more forward and more out of the box, more innovation instead of bricks and mortar at this point?
I can respond to that if you'd like. Sure. Most of the staff that work the, uh, the schedule that we're accommodating office space for are also responding to emergencies during their shift. So they aren't, um, from a virtual standpoint, ho- home and option is really not, not available for them. Uh, we use them to respond to calls and other things during the day when that's our busiest time for calls for service. So, um. From a residency standpoint, they don't have a residency requirement. So they could be living anywhere and not be able to, um, you know, in a spot where we need them to be at that time.
So of those 15 people that you said are administration, I misunderstood then. I'm sorry. I thought they were just administrative jobs.
No, uh, so for maybe a terminology type of thing. We, we sort of have two groups of employees and the, and the terms I'll use is administration and line. Line are the. When I, I'll group those into the firefighters that are working in the fire stations that are working the 24 hour shift. There's then a group of people that work eight hours a day. So your traditional Monday through Friday type of schedule. Some of those are responders that, that work during the day like me who comes to work in an office, but if certain calls happen, I. I go to or one of my assistant chiefs go to those calls. I have staff that go to, um. Manage some EMS type of, uh, services, but they also goes to calls throughout their shift. We have them during the day, um, not only because that's when most of the administrative people work, uh, in other, in other jobs, but also because. Our busiest time of day, calls for service is the daytime hours also. So they're in that group of 15, there are some civilian staff that do like financial management. Uh, sort of, I'll call it a clerk, although we call it administrative coordinator who does civilian type of work or records or. Permits and things like that. There's about five of them in the group. There's a mechanic who needs a facility to do the maintenance work. And then there's two inspectors that go out and do the fire inspections, um, throughout the day.
So at least seven people. Are not line people. Five clerks, two inspectors.
Correct.
And so that cuts your administrative number down to the, in half.
That turns into, uh, one, two.
Five clerks and two inspectors.
Yeah, there's, uh, well, when I say clerks that I'm going to say in general, there, there's a financial, uh, finance director. She has a, an accounting assistant who does payroll and financial record keeping. There's administrative coordinator. And there is, uh, what we call a community, um. Relations person who is also a clerk in the fire, for the fire inspectors who does all the record keeping too. So there's four of that, of, uh, I'll call it civilian staff.
It just, it seems to me like we're look, we're looking at just a dated model. I'm sorry. I mean, I, I think. I could try to support B, but, um, it just looks like a dated model.
Okay. I will, going back to, um. The frame up, I think the, one of the themes of the discussion at the North Shore Fire Board was the importance of. Thinking about emergency management operations, um, and other, you know, just looking ahead in terms of other ways of consolidating. So not that we want to be in an emergency all the time. However, the past couple of years have showed us that. There are times when you do need an operation center. So I will just, um, convey that those were two of the, a couple of the themes that came up. So are there other questions from trustees? Otherwise I would entertain a motion. All right. I would make a motion to, um. Support, um, option A for the North Shore Fire Department renovation of Station 82 in Glendale.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All, um, let's do a roll call vote since there's so many people on the call. Some people off camera.
Trustee Backhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Warren is excused. President Mckegg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, um.
Trustee Stockbrand, pardon me. Trustee Stockbrand? Can you hear me or have I been on mute?
No, I think trustee Stockbrand's muted.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. Thank you, trustee Stockbrand. And trustee Stockbrand, eh?
Yes. So five, one.
Five, one.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on to four B and C. These are resolutions that were adopted, um, by the fire board last week. Um, for the new trustees, the, the procedure is that we then have to take action on them. Um, otherwise, you know, everybody has to approve them, these resolutions that pertain to the budget. Um, otherwise no one, uh, they, they cannot move forward. So chief, do you want to, is there anything else you want to say about this in terms of an annual?
Sure. Uh, the, the next option or item on the agenda is the levy limit resolution. Uh, that is, uh, by state statute, joint fire departments, which are fire departments that are jointly owned and operate.
I'm sorry, that's actually, let's see, four B is B for service?
Fees, okay. So I'm sorry, fees, um. By the agreement between the seven municipalities, require adoption by at least five of the boards, the municipal governing boards or the count, common council, in the case of the city of Glendale. Uh, for, uh, implementation, we do an annual fee schedule. So the 2022 fee schedule is what we use to develop our budget, uh, based on our fees. Majority of our fees are for EMS services. There are some other fees for inspections and administrative, uh, CP, teaching CPR classes where there's costs and things like that. Uh, we do a, uh, annual relook at those fees, uh, for 2022, uh, staff is recommending, uh, keeping the EMS fees the same. Uh, uh, in fact, all, all three sections of those fees, there's EMS fees, there is, uh, inspection fees, administrative fees, like open records requests and things like that. So that, that schedule, uh, is forwarded to the municipalities for consideration by each of the boards. And that's what you're looking at tonight.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to consider resolution 2021 dash 22.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by trustee Baldoff. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Backhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to four C, it's consider resolution 2021 dash 23, a resolution to the matter. In the matter of authorizing an exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to 2005 Wisconsin Act 44.
2005 Wisconsin Act 44 said that, uh, increases for costs. Uh, from a joint fire department, which is jointly owned and operated by multiple municipalities, can be exempt from the levy limit. Uh, that each of the communities faces as long as the, uh, each member municipality's governing body, so in this case, the village board. Or common council, in the case of the city of Glendale, adopts a resolution approving that. So, uh, unfortunately, uh, how the statute was written. Even if your municipality doesn't choose to use the levy limit exception, if one of them, one of the communities in the seven consortium does. If one votes no, that means no one can use it. Uh, so, um. The several, the municipalities have been using the levy limit exception for about three years now. I know there are municipalities in 2022 that are wishing to use it. If you approve it, it doesn't necessarily mean that Shorewood will use that. That would be up to your budgeting process. Uh, um, when, when you go through your budget process, but this allows the seven municipalities to use it if they would like to.
Thanks for that clarification. That was the one that we, that is, uh, required approval by all seven.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Um, so this time I entertain a motion. Okay, I will make a motion. To approve, uh, resolution 2021 dash 23, a resolution in the matter of authorizing an exception to the levy limits for charges. For the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to 2005 Wisconsin Act 44.
I can.
Okay. Seconded by trustee Backhorst. Any discussion? Seeing none, there'll be a roll call vote.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Backhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Stockbrand?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief Whitaker, for coming this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Um, moving on to four D, consider support for the library renovation 2022, um, to 2023, use the village space and staff resources during construction and 2023 budget. Uh, village capital funds for freezing sprinklers pipe solution. Um, so we had a little bit of discussion regarding this issue in the budget meeting earlier. And so to refresh for anybody who wasn't, um, joining us at that time, um, there was kind of a, a temporary solution, but this would, um, ensure. Uh, that an engineer, it would be an engineering solution that would protect us against the liability which was creeping up that. As having a couple of incidents related to this. So, and what I liked about it is that the village cost is only 35,000 and you guys are putting a lot of it. So it seems like a deal. Um, but anyway, I would, uh, Rachel, is there anything else you'd like to say about this?
Well, um, we actually have a PowerPoint presentation, um, that you have in your packet and we'd be happy to share that. I, Emily Vera, the assistant director is here as well and, uh, Donna Whittle, one of our library trustees and John Smucker. Uh, with regard to the facility liability issue, I think you've hit it on the head and it's well described in the memo that you have. That request for up to $35,000, um, wouldn't come until the 2023 capital fund, um, so you won't see it in this year's budget. Let's see, um, and really we're here tonight to just make you aware of and get you excited about our potential library renovation project. Uh, we are asking for your support of the project in general, uh, which is going to be, as Anne you said, primarily funded by generous requests from the Lang family. Um, more specifically, we're asking for your support by providing village space for library services during construction. And also for staff assistance periodically during the renovation process. So, um, the memo in your packet provides some key history and has quite a few of the supporting documents that. Brought us to this point in the process and, um, I would be happy, Emily and I would be happy to go through this presentation. Quickly, uh, to honor your time tonight. And, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have related to the project or, um, questions you might have related to what the library board is asking from the village board. Um, tonight. So, um, let me just go ahead and get started. So a little bit about the project. Emily, are you able to forward me on there? Oh, great. Um, no problem. We had a, a PowerPoint, um, crash a few minutes ago. So. Um, the renovation will start in 2022, um, at which time the village center and the library, uh, footprint within it is going to be 20 years old, which is amazing to think about. Uh, all library carpet needs to be replaced and bathrooms refurbished at this time. And this is an opportunity for us. Oh, wow. The lights completely went out. Um, excuse me. Uh, the library carpet all needs to be replaced, bathrooms refurbished, and this is a great time for us to look at our space. Based on stakeholder feedback and community feedback. We have an estimated one, thank you, uh, an estimated 1.8 million dollar renovation of the library space. And it's going to be primarily funded by the Lang Bequest, which is intended to support projects just like this, one time special initiatives. The library board and administrative, uh, administrative team are going to lead this project with the expertise of a construction management firm that will be hired by the library board. Based on our master plan, it's going to appro- take approximately four to five months, at which time the library will operate. Uh, with limited but strong services, hopefully out of temporary village provided space. And we will, uh, achieve operational efficiencies and sustainability measures within the project scope, um, during all phases.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Sorry, I had some technical issues. Um, and then our lights went out. So, uh, as Rachel alluded to, and as, um, you all may already be aware, we did conduct a renovation master plan with HGA in 2020 with, which generated, um. Some preliminary schematics of the space. some preliminary schematics of the space, some options for a timeline and cost estimates for the work as well. Plans for the library space are based on stakeholder feedback that was gathered through our strategic plan process and our renovation master plan process as well. The key outcomes of this renovation will be enhanced customer service through reimagined entry and service points, meeting some identified community need by adding additional private study rooms, including rooms for small group use, better defined use of library space, which reflects the desire of patrons, including providing some computers for collaboration, which are separated from computers for silent work. This is a major need that we see. Refurbished bathrooms that better comply with ADA standards, enhancements that increase operational efficiencies and sustainability efforts in the library space, including addressing some of the items identified in the Better Building Challenge Report. And as we've mentioned a couple of times, solution to the pre-existing facility liability, that sprinkler piping issue. So we do have some schematics to share, the drawings created by HGA that we'll walk you through now. And a big caveat that the finishes that are included in these drawings are not final. They have not been determined, so do not worry or get hung up on carpet and colors as shown in these, in these designs. The first view here is our reimagined entry and front desk. This shows the front of the library space right when you walk in and a new position primarily for our first service point, the front desk. It's a really, becomes a clearly defined and welcoming service point and something we've heard strong feedback about in our strategic plan and the master plan process and that we all know from working here every day. There's strong sightlines and staff workflow, strong sightlines for patrons as well as they can clearly see who's at the desk and where they can go for help and reduces some congestion as people move through this space into the rest of the library. And this also keeps our much-used features, the hold shelf, which is on the left-hand side of the picture, and the Friends of the Library Book Sale, which is on the right-hand side of the picture. Moving around the corner from that new front desk service point moves us to the next view, which shows our collaborative space. This is an area we already call the collaborative space, which we're going to build upon in this renovation. Encourages some community connections through having designated seating, having computers at which people can converse and work together. The back portion of the space that you can see creates a young adult lounge, which includes a folding glass partition that can either be open for anyone to use or to have sort of a more open space or close to provide designated space for programs or for young adults after school. And finally, in the back of the picture, you can just see the column that reads info and that signifies where the information desk would be. That's where librarians serve patrons from and it's reoriented improving sightlines for staff, serving both the space and the quiet space of the library. And from the drawings, it's, we can actually see the information desk and front desk staff will actually be able to see each other pretty easily. Finally, this is the children's area, which includes two of the five total study rooms. These will be used for quiet study and tutoring, which is the major use of the library even now during COVID. The computers near the front left of this image are just reorganized and reimagined to better meet the needs of kids who use computers in our space and want to work together. And then the desk, the service desk on the right side of the image and the shelving in the middle are reoriented and repositioned to again provide better sightlines for people in the space and particularly for staff to manage the users of that space.
So we definitely plan to have library services during construction. We, the committee of implementation committee we've pulled together outlined some clear goals. We want continuity of in-person library services in Shorewood during construction for as many hours per week and weeks per year as possible. We also want continuity of virtual services, our programs and outreach that would be provide, provided by staff. And we are also looking to create a fiscally responsible service model given the limited duration of the construction period itself. We went in with some assumptions, many of these from the renovation master plan that HGA put together for us. Providing library services in a construction zone is not ideal for public or staff. It's not safe and it can definitely lead to longer construction timeframe. Temporary full-service library spaces can be costly and complex to set up and operate and libraries that have been through that process caution against them. Library materials from all of the Milwaukee County libraries will be available to Shorewood patrons to request and pick up. But one of the assumptions is that the majority of Shorewood library's collection will be inaccessible for the duration of the construction, except for items that patrons return in our book drop, items that are added by staff and also our popular Lucky Day collection. So we will have onsite library services hopefully provided in the Village Center Meeting Room. Hours for service will be established in cooperation with the Senior Resource Center. The services that we're prioritizing are public computers and public printing, pickup of holds, including curbside pickup, pickup of our take and make programming kits that have been so popular. There will be library clerks on hand to take finds, to make new library cards and renew them. And there will also be librarian, a librarian on staff to help with those public computers, access resources and research. There will be limited browsing of that small amount of collection we'll have in the space and we will accept returns of any materials from Milwaukee County libraries, including when we're closed. Some library services are going to be conducted offsite through a combination of work that's done in the vacant space in the police department. That would be for staff only, no public would be there and as well as outreach efforts by librarians. The types of services that are offsite we would want to include is going to be virtual programming, so storytimes, book clubs, lectures, podcasts, outreach programming, planning to be in the schools on a regular basis, perhaps pop-up computer lab. Our librarians will continue to select new material. We'll need to catalog that new material and process it. And of course, we'll have staff and services management to keep everything going. The library board and staff are going to provide regular updates to the community on the renovation process via the library, the village and the Milwaukee County Federated Library System media outlets.
So obviously, making the library sort of closed for a few months will have an impact on library staff, from which Rachel and I have given a great deal of consideration to with help from the library board. Most of our staff will work their normal schedule of hours, which ranges from 10 hours per week for shovers to 40 hours per week for our full-time staff. Staff will achieve this through a combination of work in this desired Village Center library space, offsite via telework, so working from home, doing outreach efforts, as Rachel alluded to, going to the schools, et cetera, and at that police department location. This also means library staff will have some availability to support village departments and projects such as providing assistance with the November 2022 election. There will also be some impact, mostly positive, I hope, on other village departments. Rachel has connected closely with all of the department heads and facilitated providing this. So with DPW, they will provide some resources regarding the bidding process. They'll also review the construction drawings in the 30, 60, 90 phases. And there will be some conversations and strategizing during construction, particularly with regard to integration with existing building mechanicals. The planning department will provide regular inspections and they'll also facilitate work with the design review board for potential exterior changes. The Senior Resource Center is a strong partner to make the Village Center Meeting Room available for library services opposite to their own programming. Will have a good impact on the clerk department and providing some assistance for library staff as we did in 2020 during the beginning of COVID, we'll do that for the November 2022 and February 2023 elections as much as we can. And then the police department will be impacted slightly by us as we have one to three staff there in the vacant space on weekdays and they will access the lobby restroom facilities.
So we've got a preliminary timeline that was provided by the master plan. We are currently working on that request for proposal for the construction management firm. We hope to have that issued by the end of October. Interview those firms and the library board will hire a construction management firm by the end of this year. Then we'll start working on some of the design development and move into construction drawings by the end of July with the public bidding process in August, September, with the hope to have construction start in October of 2022 and run through February of 2023. From the master plan process, we know it's going to take some weeks to actually move in to get the building ready for the public. So we're taking, we're, we're taking a full four weeks for that. And then the thought is in April 2023, the renovation is complete and we are welcoming the community back in the building. So we are happy to answer any questions you have about the project and the action that the library board is asking from the village board tonight. We hope to, that we generated some excitement about the possibilities of this renovation that's ahead for your library.
Is it desirable for me to stop the presentation sharing, so everyone?
Sure, why don't you?
Yeah, that's great, thank you so much, Rachel and Emily, that is really incredibly exciting and also a ton of work. So even up to this point. So just to be clear, what, I will take questions, but what we are asked for tonight is general support of the project and specifically the $35,000 contribution and then collaboration around shared use of space and staff resources during construction. So, but I see some hands up, trustee Ursink and trustee Arndorfer.
Thank you, President McCag, and you know, thank you for the, the presentation, fantastic job. It's really exciting, the, the opportunity, I think, for the library in Shorewood is, is, is fantastic. I, I think one of my questions is, and I, I know we were going through the slides, you weren't really, you didn't want us to really focus on the renderings. But, but you know, as I look at those renderings, there's, it's a lot of open space, right? You know, the desk is open, there's like a, a table with four computers on it. And you know, really got me thinking like, are you, is, is that, is that, is that the end goal? Is that, is that the concept that you guys like to go with? Or would you, is there more, is there interest in using resources to create more of like a, you know, I mean, more of a long-term sort of COVID-minded sort of space where there's maybe a little bit more privacy in areas and it wasn't so open, right? So maybe we think long-term and you're like, well, this could be around for a long time. Is there, is there resources that we could put into, into, into that? So I might be totally off base and I apologize, but it's just something that totally stuck out to me and I felt like, well, there's an opportunity to make any renovations to the space that could make it more, you know, comfortable in this new kind of COVID reality, I think that would be money well spent. But I, you know, tho- those are my initial thoughts and I, and I'd love to hear kind of your thoughts on that.
Thanks.
Sure, I'd be happy to share a few thoughts and Emily, as well as the library trustees can chime in as well. The renderings that we showed you are in a little bit more of our collaborative space where we see more people versus our stacks or quieter areas that are lining the windows where there might be a little more private or one or two-person spaces. Interestingly, with COVID, what we found is there is some desire for our small study rooms, but those also are pretty contained right now, we, we've now have air filtration units in them. So our confidence has really gained in as far as the viral load and all of that going on. We are increasing our study rooms, so that will create some of those private spaces that you're talking about in small group space. I sure hope COVID isn't around for the long haul. I think also open spaces provide some flexibility for how we can pivot, given whatever the climate is. So those are just a few initial thoughts that I had, Arthur, thank you for, for bringing that question up.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that question, it's a good thought and I have just a couple of things to add that Rachel kind of alluded to the, the stacks and the silent area, which we don't have a picture of because there's, it will certainly change, but it will also remain a very book-heavy area of the library because that is a huge desire and demand in our, in our community. But one thing we, we really wanted and we, we put forth as staff particularly was that that space would be better served by more single-user seating, which is pretty much what we have now, thanks to COVID. And so that will be a focus of that area is more private, single-user seating versus four-person table, which isn't that helpful in a quiet or silent area, because we often have to be like, I know there's four of you, but don't talk. So we're really kind of moving more in that direction to, to honor how that space functions anyway, whether it's COVID or not. And that, that will certainly help us and I think to Rachel's point too, the open spaces are more easily manipulable and we'll certainly be pushing for that when it comes to looking at furnishings and placements of things and ensuring that we can have seating and let people sort of spread out as we've had to do for the last year and a half.
I appreciate that, thank you so much and, and I'm overdue for a tour, I've, I've come to the library a lot. I'm overdue for a, a tour, like an actual deep dive tour. So I look forward to coming to the library now for that tour and also, you know, maybe talking a little bit about this and, and kind of looking at the, the, the vision for the future, so look, look forward to that, I appreciate it.
Great, we'll book that soon.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Yeah, I had three questions, I guess, first from, from a layout perspective. And right now, the front desk is, you know, adjoining the called back office, for lack of a better term. Will the front desk have, be immediately adjacent to an entrance to that area? Or is a person going to have to walk all the way over to that current space if they want to go back there, I guess, just a logistical question. My second question is, what's the usage like for the library during the construction period? And was that factored into, you know, the planning for the, you know, for the actual, you know, for the actual work? And I guess third, you know, personal question, you're in dear to my heart, I mean, I guess, what's, what's the impact going to be on the scope of the collection? And you know, how, in terms of books and periodicals and I guess, how does that evolve? That's what I got.
Yeah, those are good questions.
Yeah, those are good questions.
I can take number one if you want, Rachel.
Sure, go for it.
I can let you take the other one. The first one is important to me because it's my staff, but my, my team that I supervise, the staff's the front desk and we did have a lot of conversation and our staff did see the drawings and we had one of our circulation team members on the master plan committee. And we talked a lot about that, that desk will no longer be immediately like attached to the staff area and that our staff door will, will probably have an actual door. But we see a lot of pros that this will provide actually a better staff space, a better, more usable desk for staff and for the public. Our current desk was built to have two computers on it and we haven't been able to have that the whole time during COVID because it's very, very cramped. And we can't have patrons stuck together and staff stuck together in that space. And so this new model will just give us a lot more flexibility and staff will be, they will find, find a way to, to be comfortable having to walk a little bit, but really not very far from the staff area to the desk.
And then I'll answer the third question about the collection. We don't anticipate reducing the size of our physical collection. Right now, we have, off the top of my head, I think between 90 and 95,000 items, physical items in the library right now. I don't see the American Public Library in a period of growth for physical collections. I mean, I do anticipate that physical collections may dip somewhat, but we are not looking to do a deep weed or to reduce our physical collection size with any, you know, and any large amount. So I can assure you that the physical collection will be here moving forward with the renovation. And then I just need a little more clarification on your second question, Jim. You were asking about library usage during the construction.
No, I guess like what, during a typical year, how busy is the library during the months in which, you know, in that winter time period? You know, I mean, do you see? You know, I mean, do, do you see fewer people going on a spot? I mean, I, I, I was just wondering in terms of the usage levels. You know, was that factored into consideration for timing of construction?
That's a great question. That's a great question. We spend a lot of time talking about seasonal impacts and trying to aim for certain points in the year. Oh, wouldn't it be better if we could do it during this time? We could do more outdoor programming. We could, you know, that it would just increase our options. As far as library visits, we are pretty consistently busy to the same amount throughout the year. During certain times of day, obviously, we have busier times and trends there. We did spend some time trying to narrow it down, but one of the things that the committee determined was that we needed to be more flexible on the time of year that the renovation or the actual construction would take place so that we could have that flexibility. There are just so many factors that are involved with that timeline possibly shifting along the way. We just felt we needed to be flexible and that's part of the reason why we have that service plan that we think is going to work any time of year. If things do align the way that they are now, we did hear from HGA that winter is a pretty good time for construction companies to do inside work and that we might get more bids on the project. We, it might be more competitive and we can get a lower price because it is potentially going to be during cold weather months. So that seems to be in our favor right now if we stick with the current preliminary timeline.
So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion. And if there are members of the public that we're hoping to, that have questions about the renovation, I would welcome, invite them to contact the library director through their website or stop in and, and ask those questions in person. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I could take a stab at that motion. Although I, I see Kathy has her hand up though.
Okay. Trustee Stokran?
I can ask my question after the motion's made, if that's, if you'd prefer.
That would be great.
Okay.
Motion on the table.
Okay. I move to support the Shorewood Library Board of Trustees renovation of the Shorewood Public Library and related footprint with the understanding that A, the renovation will be funded by the Lang Bequest and other donor funds, except for up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-three Village Capital Budget for repair of a pre-existing sprinkler piping issue. And B, library services will continue during renovation in person, virtually and through outreach efforts. I further move to support allocating village resources, including village spaces and staff time, to support the library renovation.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Bachhorst. Thank you very much. And just a reminder that the library board has the authority to move headward, move forward with this project. They're asking for our financial support and collaboration in these areas. Trustee Stokran?
Thank you. So my question was, so some things will happen in the Village Center. So are we talking about the large room that has the partitions that you can pull out and separate the space?
Yes, although we don't plan to use those.
So you think you'll have the whole space?
Yes, we're hoping to have the whole space, but we're envisioning a mobile library in order to work collaboratively and share that space with the Senior Resource Center. We will actually have to roll out those materials and computers on carts and skids, put them into storage in the back area and then roll them back out into the Village Center meeting room to, to make it work and to accommodate Senior Resource Center programming.
Okay, because I know there are other groups that use that space too, like the Women's Club.
Right. And so that will be during those four, four to five months. Community, this would be one of the losses, is that community groups would be unable to use that space for those four to five months. So that library service could be in that space.
And so would the library close for Election Day because that whole space is used for the elections?
Yes, we would. And that's part of the reason why we know we can guarantee that we can provide library staff for the elections that are taking place during construction because we won't have an onsite location, because of course, this is a polling station in the lower level.
So for say, three days, set up the election day and take down, there will be no library because you have to have the election.
You bet. And that, that was similar to how it works with the Senior Resource Center now with that space.
And my other question was about, and I, I think I saw Captain Leventhal is on the call. And I know you've, you've consulted with department heads. My understanding is that that police office space is extremely rough, like no sprinklers, no HVAC.
It actually is a little bit further along. We did go ahead and do a application for occupancy and we had planning walkthrough with us. They checked out the utilities in that space. It is too cold to have it occupied by staff. I think the major challenge there is that there is no restroom facility, no bathroom facility, and hence that minor, we're hoping disruption to have library staff walk through to use the lobby bathroom during this time.
Okay. Well, I don't look forward to you being closed, but I look forward to the final product. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. If we could do a roll call vote, that would be great.
Yes. Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President McKay?
Yes.
Trustee Stokran?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. All right. And the final item that we have under Special Order of Business is item four E, the quarterly EDI update. And for that, I'm going to ask manager Ewald to present.
Included in your packet is a, a list of, of items that occurred during the second quarter this year that we wanted to update the board on, pardon me, third quarter this year that we wanted to update the board on. One is that we have nineteen participants that will be attending either conversations on race and the Unlearning Racism class. So really excited to see the amount of participation that we have for a number of our committee and committee members, board members and employees. In July, the Village of CDA hosted the Milwaukee County Team Listening to Milwaukee County's Strategic Plan for Racial Equity. This was one of the first sessions that the CDA hosted as we've embarked on an educational series of programming for our community that focuses in on affordable housing. In August, the CDA also hosted the Community Development Alliance to talk about their plan for providing affordable housing in the city of Milwaukee. And in September of this year, as you well, or you're well aware of, the village board collaborated on a process, a review of a request for proposals for police chief recruitment services that included community comments, human relations commission feedback and police commission feedback and touched on equity components. On September fourteenth, we had a number of community participants zoom in for a program offered by the Shorewood Library and Senior Resource Center. This was again, another educational series on Affordable Housing 101, What You Need to Know About Affordable Housing Opportunities and Its Challenges. It was presented by Reggie Jackson. PowerPoint slides for all of those programming efforts can be found off of the CDA's committee page from our website. And most can be viewed again online. And if not, presentation slides and summary of materials are also available. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions from trustees? If questions occur to you, please direct them to manager Ewald. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent. A second.
Okay, it was trustee Baldoff, seconded by trustee Bachhorst? Is that right?
Correct.
Any discussion? Trustee Stokran?
I'd like to pull item B, please. B as in boy.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. We will move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of five B. All those in favor? Show of hands or aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six zero. And moving on to items removed from the consent agenda, five B, Consider Regular Village Board Minutes, September eighth, twenty twenty-one. Trustee Stokran?
Thank you. On page eighty-nine of the packet, it'd be the fourth paragraph down. Starts with trustee Ursink noted he does not support regarding the Atwater Beach lifeguards. Trustee Ursink noted he does not support the vendor and supports redistributing the RFP. Then it states trustee Stokerbrand agreed, noting that staff has spent a considerable amount of time on this matter. If we could, after trustee Stokerbrand agreed that she does not support the vendor either, noting that, while noting that staff has spent a considerable amount of time on this. Again, trustee Stokerbrand agreed that she does not support the vendor either, while noting that staff has spent a considerable amount of time on this matter. I note this because I did not support redistributing the RFP and that makes it more clear. So I move to make that change.
Okay. So move to amend the minutes.
Second.
Okay, seconded by trustee Ursink. All right. All those in favor? Say aye or show of hands?
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst?
I'll abstain.
Okay. So motion carries five with one, five ayes and one abstention. All right. Item seven, public hearings. There are none this evening. And item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda and discussion may follow on non-agenda items or discussion and action may come at future meetings. Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening?
President McKay, there is a resident on the line by the name of Jean Pierre Riffer, who would like to speak.
Okay.
Miss Jean Pierre, if you could please provide your address.
Yeah, hi, good evening. It's Jean Pierre Rifford here. I'm at four five three eight North Morris Boulevard.
Thank you. And, and I'll, I'll note when you have, if your comments go to three minutes. Thank you.
Right. Well, in regards to, but I see actually that on, what is item eleven here? What I want to talk about actually, it's item for future consideration about political action committee. And I had an issue with some obscure groups within the, the village of Shorewood, which actually, you know, influenced the, the board or actually give some advice. And there was never any, or I have a hard time myself finding the names of these people. So I'm not sure if maybe the, the village board could institute a, a type of program or procedure to, you know, to, to be more transparent as far as who is behind. Let's say in particular, Masco Shorewood, that's the one I have, I'm trying to find out. You know, we just have an email address, but there's no contact number. There's no name. I mean, you cannot, if it wasn't before Call of Law, you know, and I wanted to cross-examine their, you know, what they have to say, well, I don't kind of contact them, so it wouldn't, their witness, you know, where, where their testimony wouldn't have any, any value. So, but yet it looks like their testimony right now has some value before the board. And, you know, as a member of the public, I'm, I'm a bit upset about that. And I wish, I hope it will be rectified. And I see that trustee Bachhorst has, in the past, raised the issue. I watched some recorded video of this board meeting and applaud her for what she's done. And I hope we'll, we'll get more about, you know, some resolutions. Some, I don't know how you guys want to proceed, but that'll be great. Something happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that forward. Trustee Bachhorst?
Um, yes, thank you. I would just like to mention that this is on items for future consideration. I do this not to shut down any, any kind of discourse or dialogue right now, but also that I'm just to, I will be bringing this up later. And Jean Pierre, I, I want to thank you for, for reminding me of that and, and making those points because I do concur with, with exactly with what you said as far as transparency, accountability, et cetera. I think that, sorry, you know, if we use any kind of reference to any association, organization, et cetera, it's incumbent upon us as publicly elected officials and governmental officials to ensure that the rest of the public knows, you know, from, from whom we're, we're getting this information, especially if we legitimize that organizations. So thank you.
Yeah, under this item, it's that, this item is under citizens to be heard. So we aren't discussing anything at this time. It's for citizens to be heard on matters that are not on the agenda. So with that, are there other citizens that would like to be heard this evening? David, is that a hand raise or a clap?
This is actually not David. My name is David Goldhopper.
Okay, David Goldhopper, is that a hand or a clap?
It's a hand. I'd like to speak citizen, for citizens to be heard.
Can you please state your name? Would you like to be heard on something not on the agenda?
Correct. My name is David Goldhopper, four four zero zero North Wildwood Avenue. I should probably reserve my, my comments until after I hear trustee Bachhorst's proposal. But I guess I can speak then as well. Anonymous political speech is protected by the United States Constitution. And any attempt to de-anonymize political speech or otherwise hinder it will get a reaction from those who know constitutional law. Thank you.
President McKay, I do not see any other hands raised. I think we may have briefly lost President McKay with a connection issue.
Well, I would move for a three-minute bio break.
Second.
Point of accommodation, I guess is the proper way to put that, but anyway.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff? Yep, there you go. Sorry. I was looking for that. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. We'll see you in three minutes.
Hi, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Every, so I, I thought you had a connection issue. So we just actually agreed to take a three-minute break?
Oh, okay, great. I just, yeah, for some reason it dropped and I couldn't get back on, so.
That's what we thought.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see in three minutes.
All right, great, thanks.
It's 9:12. It's been three minutes.
Hi.
Aye.
Shoot.
Are you mixing something, Ann?
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, sorry about that. All right, we'll figure this out. So moving on to new business, oh, 9A, consider capital drive pavement marking contract. So is Director Bushlick on the, Bushlick on the phone?
I'm here.
You did.
Sorry, I believe what's in front of us tonight is a request to not approve a contract.
That is, that is correct. We only received one bid in response to the project and as you will know from the memo, it is significantly larger than the budget allocation and staff is recommending that the $50,000 that was included in the 2021 capital projects or capital budget, excuse me, be reprogrammed for 2022. And we request the addition of, well, we will later request the addition of some additional capital reserves to, to be able to complete that project next year, but the formal action in front of you tonight would be to reject, reject the bid.
Okay, is there a motion? Trustee Stokerbrand?
I move this a bid for the 2021 East Capital Drive pavement marking replacement project be rejected.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Stokerbrand, seconded by trustee Ursink. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, show of hands or voice?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 6-0. So at this time, I'd like to cede the chair to trustee Backhorse as chair of JPNL because I'm having connectivity issues and I don't want to inconvenience the board.
Thank you, President McKay. Can everyone hear me all right? Great, so we will be moving on to the next order of business. Sorry, I have six minutes remaining on my update on my computer here, so if someone wouldn't mind just reading that, the next agenda item, this should be five minutes.
It's 9B, update on advanced metering infrastructure AMI project, Director Bushlick?
Sure, you have a memo with some detail in your packets. I can certainly run through the highlights of that or simply answer questions as I know you have some other items on the agenda tonight and I would like to be respectful of your time, so. Your preference?
Well, I would say that if any trustees had questions, that we go ahead and ask those, given we've all read the packet and had opportunity to ask these questions of you in advance. So that's what, how I would prefer to do it. Unless there's anything you want to say, you want to give a 30 seconds or anything, Leanne, otherwise.
I think the primary point, yeah, there's two primary points. One is that we are, you know, our schedule, our rollout has been a bit slower than any of us anticipated. We are working through that and the vendor has assured us that they will, they're getting back on track. We're addressing some of the issues and that we are still, we have not changed the scheduled completion date. The second item would be related to some COVID issues that we continue to work through and will continue to work through for the, for the remainder of the project. At this point, we don't have any specific requests or recommendations related to COVID, but just really a heads up that there are obviously some residents who are, who are concerned and have some hesitation with the installers and/or our staff entering their homes. We are sort of putting those requests kind of on hold, if you will, and, and as we get closer to the end of the project, we will revisit, revisit the number of residences where that is a concern and make, you know, identify some alternatives or recommendations for the board at that time.
Thank you, Director Bushlick. I see that trustee Stokerbrand has her hand up.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand the valve situation and then also the, the problem with the sizes. So there's problems because a lot of the valves, that's personal private property in people's homes are old and not working very well. I mean, is that something that people should be able to check in their own homes and just try to say, well, I'm going to be ready, I'm going to, you know, look, you know, what, is we're getting the word out so people can try to make sure that they're doing what they can before it's their turn?
With the exception of calling in a private plumber to change or exercise the valve, there really is very little a resident can do on their own. So it really is a function of the valves not, not being used, not having not been exercised or maintained. You know, that they're, they're really just a smaller iteration of the, the gate valves that we have hundreds of throughout our system. We make it a practice to exercise those on a, on a regular basis for this reason. Property owners typically don't do that. And when you have working parts that are potentially decades, perhaps approaching 100 years old, when those parts aren't used, they tend to seize up. And so, you know, that's kind of what we're working through. And that, that, that really is entirely the reason for the slow rollout is that the installing, the installation contractor is just having, it's a bit of a learning curve for some of their technicians and we want to make sure that we're doing this in a careful and cautious manner so that we're not causing any property damage. But, you know, like I said, we're getting there.
And so I know you said that in a couple of instances, two valves have been broken, so those are the private property ones?
Correct.
Okay, so the, the utility staff attempting to operate the curb stop valve, that, that valve is not, not the problem, it's more the private property ones?
In some cases, both are issues. You know, in the majority of them, we're, you know, we're operating one or the other. There are going to be a handful of them where perhaps neither will work. Those are also going to get put in a hold pile. And then what we will do is our utility staff will work to continue to work to operate the curb stop or locate it so that that can be the, the method for the temporary disconnect, turning off the water so that the valve, the meter can be replaced.
And it just affects that one residence, right?
Yes. Worst case scenario is that we cannot operate the meter valve nor can we operate the curb stop. And then we're looking at shutting off that area of water. If it comes to that, we will certainly do our very best to, you know, make sure we do that strategically where if we have a number of them in the same shut-off area, we're timing that so there's one water shut-off where we can address multiple homes, if that's how it works out.
And then I guess I was concerned about this, the meter sizes. Where, I mean, if you, it looked like it would, if you, would you change it to the larger size? You wouldn't do that without the homeowner's permission, right? And you'd make it clear that if you go from the one and a half to the two, it's going to cost you over $100 more per year for your water bill?
We will make, we will make that clear to the property owner. It's not a matter of permission. If the house is plumbed for a two-inch meter, that is what we have to put back.
Okay.
The, the, the the apparatus that would be available to us to reduce the two to a one and a half, you know, the, the private plumbing, the configuration in the homes is no longer, I'm doing this backwards. The apparatuses that are made today will not allow us to put a one and a half inch meter in a two-inch meter setting. Years ago, those were made differently and that could be done. That is no longer the case. So our only option is to put a two-inch meter in, in those 70 residences where they now are plumbed for a two-inch, but reduced it to a one and a half. If the resident in the future wishes to return to a one and a half, that is, that they absolutely have the right and the ability to do that, but it will require some private plumbing at their expense.
And so I think if you, at this writing, you said 10% of the project meters have been replaced. Is that in that northeast area only?
Yes.
And so.
Aside from the, does the 20 or so test meters that we did in July.
Okay, so.
Those were throughout the village.
I have to say, when I was reading the memo, I was thinking, this isn't going very well, but I mean, on a scale of one to 10 with everything going really well, obviously, I was also concerned about the problems with the phone numbers, you know, people not being able to reach the, the numbers not being functioning for the people, is that?
Um, that, that's been, that has been a concern. We've had multiple conversations with Vanguard Utility Service reps regarding some issues they have had with their call center and the staffing of that center. I, you know, they have assured us that they have taken steps to address the issues that they've had and are, and will continue to do so moving forward. It's something that we were monitoring very closely. It's conversations that my staff and I have with, with our project team multiple times a week, if not daily. So we're, we are doing everything that we have authority to do and can do currently. If we get to a point where we have to have a different type of conversation, the board will certainly know about that. But as of this point, we are not really at a place where we can have any type of discussion about breach of contract.
Okay, and so about how many, how many Vanguard people are out doing this Monday through Friday?
As of, as of this week, I believe there are four technicians in the village and they would be looking at bringing that to a total of six.
And they each do one property at a time?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from trustees? Great, this was scheduled just for an update. Thank you, Director Bushlick. We'll be moving on to item 9C then. Consider RFP for police recruitment services. Rebecca, are you taking this?
I'd be happy to. So we have gone through the process we had outlined to obtain public comments. In your, in your packet, those public comments have been included and attached to this memo as well as the draft RFP. There were no further recommendations provided by the Human Relations Commission or the Police Commission on the RFP. Trustee Warren had requested designated representatives from both the HRC and Police Commission to review the proposals when received. The HRC has designated Chair Sharvida Parker and the Police Commission has designated Craig Bullock. The Public Safety Chair will work with staff from the Village Manager's Office to review the proposals at a future date. And you are also aware, trust, pardon me, Assistant Village Manager Burkhardt had sent out an updated copy of the RFP that included just some contextual changes. Nothing that significantly altered the, the composition of the RFP this afternoon. And at this time, we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rebecca. If there are any questions from trustees, entertain those now.
I would make the motion.
I'll go for it, President McKay. I'll go for it, President Mckegg.
What is the motion in the packet?
It is, I move to approve the RFP for Police Recruitment Services with the red line changes noted.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by President Mckegg, seconded by trustee Orndorfer. Any discussion by trustees? Say none, there will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Orndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff.
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst.
Yes.
Trustee Ursink.
Yes.
President Mckegg.
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Motion. Sorry, I guess you said that.
That's okay.
Okay, moving along then, we will go to reports from village officials. The 10A Village President, 10A Roman numeral I, ICC meeting September 13.
Thank you. I emailed you all a link to a multimodal transportation symposium that's happening next week, hosted by the Regional Transit Council, Leadership Council, so that's just an FYI. And then Milwaukee County Intergovernmental Relations announced that they have recovered a really large portion of the transit funds that were cut from the state budget for Milwaukee County, from some state funding sources, as well as congressional spending, and they're looking for some federal dollars. So I thought that that was really great news. And then moving on to the fireboard meeting, actually, all the updates have been given, so I don't need to mention that. And then the third item on my report is, the Plan Commission will meet September 28th, and the Wimmer Communities' application for a parking special exception will be on that agenda, and they are awaiting an updated traffic study, and I think those are the only materials that will be added to the application. Otherwise, it all stands as it was before. That's all.
Thank you, President Mckegg. Do you want to resume chair personship, or should I continue on?
You can go for it.
Thank you. All right, reports from village officials, village trustees. Does anyone have a report?
Yes, trustee Ursink.
Great, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment and send all of my great, my good vibes to Steph Salvia. I mean, she, you know, she has done a lot, you know, with the feast and for our bid for the two years she's been here. Got a call this morning from Steph saying that she will be moving on from the Shorewood bid and taking a job elsewhere, which is the saddest news in the world for us. I mean, you know, for the bid, and not only the bid, but our community. We lost another really, really talented person, you know, that's here, and that seems to be a current trend. And, you know, obviously, it's only going to get better for here. We're finding better people, but it's really sad to see people of her caliber leaving Shorewood. And, you know, this is not an easy place to lead or to govern and to, you know, operate, you know, like we do. And it's not for everybody, and unfortunately, I think, you know, part of that played into this role, and it's sad, and I think, you know, it'd be nice to be able to figure out how to retain the best quality people, as opposed to drive them away. So, I mean, that's going to be my goal moving forward, and it's a sad day to lose Steph Salvia, but also, you know, honored to work with her and just as a community, keep all the praises on the world for her, because she did a lot for Shorewood, especially during COVID, working with, you know, the CDA to give out business grants. So, you know, sad news, but, you know, lucky to have her for the past two years.
Thank you, trustee Ursink. And I agree, and she's done a fantastic job. It is a difficult place and difficult environment and difficult times, and, you know, we, as a village, we we are a village, and we always hear it takes a village, and I think that I know I could do better and and probably a lot of us could to help retain some of the valuable staff that we have, because turnover has been pretty high. So anyway, are there any other trustees that have a report? Okay, seeing none. Village manager Rebecca, you all, please?
No report.
Okay. Then we'll go on to item 11, Items for Future Consideration. Normally, I would let someone else go first, but I guess I'm on the agenda for item A. And so this was brought up more or less earlier by one of our residents regarding transparency and other requirements. And I know this is kind of vague on here. I'm trying my best to take a stab at it, and I'm sure the legal team will help with this. But where I'm going with this political action committees, lobbyists, and other group association transparency requirements, what I, my intention with that is not to limit freedom of speech or any speech protected under the Constitution, but as an organization, and this is one of the situations where I know we're supposed to praise in public and educate privately, but I think that a lot of this is new, and we have a lot of new members on the board, and even some of the older ones, we all slip up. So we've had a variety of organizations, and we're, in my opinion, we're very, we're very lucky to have them. You know, groups are affiliations of people within and outside the village who ask for certain things from us. And I have mentioned it before, and others have as well, that it would be, instead of referring and just to those groups, that perhaps, you know, we could at least somewhere publicly, it doesn't have to be every time. We don't have to enumerate all the numbers or the boards or directors if they exist, but, but just to give the public an idea, because, you know, if there is, for example, Beverly Road Association, right, I'm just making this up, just by stating that and legitimizing that without saying that this is, you know, a definition of this group, a lot of people don't have the level of, how do you call it? They're not as involved as we are, you know, in this organization. So, you know, it's just for the transparency for the public. And we do get lobbied, not just by residents, but hopefully, this doesn't happen, but, you know, by other organizations, and if we do refer to them, it is, again, a part of transparency and accountability for us to let the public know who these, who these groups are. Not that every conversation we have, we have to disclose, I'm not trying to say that, but when we list in memoranda or in other situations, you know, the Beverly Road Group, then there should be at least some part where we know who that that group is, the membership, what type of organization is the 501(c)(3) (c)(4), etc. So that's, that's what my intent of this is, and of course, this is pretty loose. So I just wanted to get this on items for future consideration, whether it goes to JPNL, which is pretty appropriate actually, or strategic initiatives, etc. So.
I would say that, is that a motion?
Sure. I move to place item 11A on a future agenda for JPNL.
Second.
Any questions or discussion from trustees? And remember, this isn't, you're not voting for it. That's really just that this could be discussed by JPNL. Go ahead, trustee Stokbrand.
I just wanted to make sure I understood this. So I think the gentleman earlier had a question about mask up Shorewood, and when the East Capital whatever group, when these people speak at the meetings, they have to give their address. There is, you know, I'm in favor of transparency and accountability also, but it is possible for this gentleman to go back. When there's mask up Shorewood coming for the first mask mandate that we approved last year, these people all gave their addresses, so that would be a good place for him to start.
Well, there's no question, of course, we can ask people to go back in the archives, but what I'm asking of us as a, you know, a government transparent body is that we have some record of this, so that someone doesn't have to go through all of the meetings and all of the minutes. And also just for ourselves, because I get lost in acronyms, as I'm sure a lot of you do as well. So it's not, I'm not, it's not just mask up Shorewood. There's, like you said, the East of Capital, there's Keep Lake Thrive Green. There are a lot of great groups in this village, and I would, I would say that I don't think anyone would want us to do our business in a non-transparent way. President Mckegg?
Yeah, I think we're getting off topic, and we should take a vote on the motion on the floor as to whether you support assigning this to JPNL or not. So a yes vote is assign it to JPNL for a future agenda. A no vote is don't assign it to JPNL for a future agenda.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go for it.
I would like the committee to also consider, in terms of transparency requirements, that all political contributions to candidates be available online. Elected officials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Melissa?
Yeah, I guess I just have a question about that. I'm not opposed to that, but are we suggesting that we want to also have that on Shorewood's, on the village's website? Because.
Well, that's a great question. Right now, these are.
I don't want to duplicate that work, so I guess if we're just making a motion to consider it, that's fine. I don't want to bog this process down.
Sure. And so I will go back to that, but where I'm going with this is I would prefer that these be separate items, because we could throw everything in, and the intent of my motion was to, was this one, but trustee Stokbrand, I would say you can always come up with that motion for another item of future consideration. So anyway, that, for that reason, I would, I'm going to vote no on the amendment, but I will vote yes on that motion if that were brought up separately.
Is there a second on the amendment?
There was.
Yeah, I did second it, but I would, I think I'd go back. I agree with trustee Bachhorst, that I think they should be two separate. They shouldn't be tied together, so I would, you know, withdraw my second. If not, I would just vote no.
I'll withdraw my motion then. My amendment, my move to amend the motion.
Okay, so unanimous consent of withdrawing the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any other discussion from trustees? Remember, this is just to put this on an item for future consideration. It's not to vote yes or no on this tonight.
How do we go ahead now and put this item on?
I'd like to vote.
We can vote now, and then this will go on later on. So, okay.
I'm happy to call the roll.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Rebecca.
Trustee Orndorfer?
Nay.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Baldoff?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Bachhorst? Pardon me, trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Motion carries, what, trustee Stokbrand?
I was just going to offer a motion if you were done.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were commenting on your vote. I was like, oh, okay. Motion passes five one.
Okay, so trustee Stokbrand, you'd like to make an item for future consideration. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make an item for future consideration to be considered by the JPNL Committee to consider the disclosure of all contributions to village board candidates who are elected officials on the village website.
Okay, so to discuss the possibility of consideration of
To consider putting. Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
So, second.
Second.
A second by trustee Ursink. Any discussion?
Trustee Ursink, I just, you know, I guess I just question, I think the village website maybe, you know, makes sense, but I just want to explore, explore, you know, what the options are, and, you know, are there other municipalities that do this? You know, I just kind of like to look into the details, and I guess that's why we're taking it to JPNL.
Right, and then all of you would be invited to the JPNL Committee when we discuss this and whatnot, if time permits.
And it would also, it would also go on a list and work its way up the list, so you're not, the motion doesn't.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion?
Trustee Stokbrand has her hand raised.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Yeah, my goal here is not to make work for staff any more than necessary. You could tie this to the requirements by the state so that that document that is filed with the state could just, which you file with the village clerk, could just be downloaded to the village website, so it should not be too onerous.
Okay, sounds good. Well, we will have a robust discussion, I imagine, in committee then. Anyone else before we take the roll? Okay, seeing no one else, Rebecca?
Trustee Orndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Baldoff?
Aye.
Trustee Bachhorst?
Yes.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
President Mckegg?
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Fantastic. Are there any other trustees with items for future consideration? Okay, seeing none. Item 12, everyone's favorite.
So moved. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good job, guys.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.